Yeah, she developed that.
Okay.
She just really enjoys it, so.
Just getting.
Okay.
Why not do what you like?
I will go ahead and start tonight's meeting for the record. It is Tuesday, May 16th. It's two minutes after six. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Councilmember Byrd.
Here.
Mayor DeVeard.
Here.
And Councilmember Little Roberts is absent.
Thank you. Item number two is Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Gibb Floyd here?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number three is our community invocation. I invite you all to join us in this item or take this as a moment of reflection. Tonight we have Gibb Floyd with us from Ten Mile Christian Church. Thank you for joining us. If you'll come up to the podium right here.
Let's pray. Gracious Father in heaven, we welcome your presence in tonight's city proceedings and thank you for the blessings you provide to citizens of this great city and the surrounding community. Grant us a measure of your spirit as the agenda items are presented and discussed by Mayor DeVeard and others involved. May the decisions of this evening be both pleasant and productive. And we humbly ask this in the name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for leading us. I'd like to offer you a City of Meridian pin. Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Added to the agenda is item 8A, which is a final plat for Bainbridge subdivision. That's H 2017-0043. It's added to the agenda today. It was a continuation from a previous meeting, which needs to be added today. It will then be continued again to May 23rd, but it needs to be amended onto our agenda with added item 8A. I would move that we adopt the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Mr. Clerk, item number five, do you have someone that has signed up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have one individual sign up, Victor Danilovich, representing Danic Gymnastics. His description this evening is to discuss parking, parking issue, so Victor is here to discuss that.
Okay. Victor, if you'd like to come and join us in the front. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. I'm Victor Danilovich, from Danic Gymnastic owner, and address is 574 South Locust Grove Road.
Thank you.
Here in Meridian. We have very, very, I hope you remember me, because I built that building five years ago, and we meet several times with few people who is here. We have good, good problem parking, so I have proposition to build parking behind my building, because even right now, I was driving on Water Tower Street and probably seven, 10 cars was parking right on the street, just my customers. So, I talked with Highway District, they didn't let me build entrance from Water Tower Road. So, I would like talk with Police Chief Department. I talked with his partners or his officers, Stacy.
Arnold.
Arnold. Pe- Pechen. And Tom Baker. And they recommend talk with Police Chief if we can figure out this case. If, if they will let me in from them, how to say, road, entrance, to build small, small road to my lot, will be no problem then. I can put probably my employees behind my building on parking and will be another about 15 parking free for customers who park on street. And reason is because they always with kids, and I don't like when kids going on the road, because road pretty busy at 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, I mean Water Tower Road. So, I don't know if, if we can figure out how to do it, I don't know, maybe I have to talk with you later or with somebody else. That's kind of my problem. You understand my problem?
Yes. Have you gone in and talked to our community development?
Yes.
Department?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was talking with Bill, what's his name?
Parson.
Yeah, Bill Parson. And that's what he recommend me to go to this meeting, represent all this, because they don't have problem with this. Only problem, if Police Department will let us do it, we're good.
Okay. Well, this is, this is intended to bring your concern to council, and we can't make any decisions because it was not posted as an agenda item, but let us look further into it and, because there's not too much, we don't have any background to even talk about it, but.
Madam Mayor.
I had to start with something, so.
Hold on, Victor.
I can attest to the problem, because my son attends there, and my husband leaves the house 45 minutes early so that he can get a parking spot. And generally, then, the overflow is all parked on the street and into the Police Department parking lot on a daily basis, so. It's definitely a problem, and there are kids crossing, and it's, it's kind of crazy in that area, so I hope you can work something out.
That's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to figure out how we can start, who can help me to do, so.
Well, we will follow up with you. I'll get a little bit more information and I'll, I'll let you know maybe what the next steps are.
Yeah, it will be great.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, Mr. Clerk?
It was only that one, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as published and for the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move to item 8A, which was amended onto the agenda for the final plat for Bainbridge subdivision, number five, H 2017-0043. This applicant has requested this, this item be continued to May 23rd. Counsel, I will need a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we continue item 8A, H 2017-0043, to May 23rd, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second, to continue item 8A to May 23rd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did I hear all ayes?
Aye.
Okay. All ayes, motion carried. Item 8B is a public hearing for Bell Tower Park, H 2017-0053. I will open this item with staff comments.
New Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you said, this is an application for a short plat. The site here on your screen consists of approximately 1.64 acres of land, which is currently zoned LO, located at 3140 and 3150 West Bell Tower Drive. And the property was annexed in 2001 and platted as part of the Bridge Tower Crossing subdivision. It was later re-subdivided in 2004 as the gallery sub or the Bridge Tower gallery sub. The applicant requests approval of a short plat, which would consist of four commercial building lots on, as I said, approximately 1.64 acres of land in the LO zoning district. The proposed plat is a re-subdivision of lots two and three of Block 1 of the gallery subdivision. The street buffer along the west boundary of the site adjacent to Ten Mile Road was installed with the construction of the subdivision and must be protected during construction. Cross access is provided between the lots for access to adjacent public streets via an existing, excuse me, an existing easement. I did not receive any written testimony on this, and staff is recommending approval. And for any questions you have.
Thank you, Josh. Counsel, any questions?
None.
Is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thomas Felter, 219 South Ruby Street in Boise.
Thank you.
And we've read the, the conditions and we agree to them.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
None.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we close the public hearing on Bell Tower Park, H 2017-0053.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve H 2017-0053 and include staff and applicant comments.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second, to approve item 8B. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 8C is a public hearing for Troutner Park subdivision, number two, H 2017-0045. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
This is an application for two vacations. The property location is 375, 321, 279, and 177 West Penwood Street. This vacation has to do most recently with the recently approved Rainier Park, excuse me, Rainier Villas apartment project that was recently approved. The applicant is requesting approval to vacate a portion of the 10-foot wide public utility drainage and irrigation easement located between lots four and five of Block 4 and lots four and five of Block 5 that was platted with the Troutner Park subdivision, number two, as well as a section of the right-of-way of Southwest 3rd Avenue, which would be south of West Penwood Street. Public utility and drainage easements, in this case, run north and south along, along the lot lines of lots four and five of Block 4 and four and five of Block 5. The right-of-way for Southwest 3rd Avenue currently extends approximately 120 feet south of West Penwood Street and is approximately 54 feet wide. As I just mentioned, 2016, a condition of use permit was approved for a multifamily development consisting of 180 multifamily units and approximately 7.52 acres in this CG zoning district on this lot. Once this vacation process is complete, the applicant proposes to construct multifamily structures across these property lines, as well as to incorporate this right-of-way vacation as part of their project. The applicant has received approval from the applicable utilities, which would be Idaho Power, CenturyLink Cable One, Intermountain Gas, and the NAPA Meridian Irrigation District to vacate the public utility and drainage easements, and is working through the process with the Highway District to receive their approval. With that, staff did not receive any written testimony on this application, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you, Josh. Counsel, any questions?
I have none at this time.
Would the applicant like to provide comment?
For the record, Kent Brown, 3161 East Springwood. I think it's kind of cut and dried in the fact that we've been working with utility companies and have gotten the relinquishments of their rights to those easements already. We're doing a property line adjustment to adjust those lot lines, property lines around, and, and need these easements to be vacated. We're working with the Highway District because it's a public right-of-way and it has to be purchased. We had looked at doing an exchange with them, and now they said that the exchange won't work, so we have to do an appraisal. So, we're getting appraisal, and then that should move along quickly for the vacation of the Southwest 3rd Street, so. Stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to provide testimony? Counsel, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we close the public hearing on H 2017-0045.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second, to close the public hearing on item 8C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Counsel, any discussion? Okay, do I have?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move that we approve item 8C. Excuse me.
Yes.
HC, sorry. H 2017-0045.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second, to approve item 8C. Is there any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 9A is under, for department reports, is under our Police Department, and I am assuming that Lieutenant Brown is, has got this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The Police Department is requesting spending authority and authority for the Crime Prevention Spring Safety Fling. We have received a check for $2,500 from the Idaho Department of Transportation. We are asking to spend this money to purchase T-shirts for the kids involved in this event. Open to questions?
What schools are you doing this, this at?
I, Madam Mayor, I do not know the schools that we are doing this at, at this time.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
None.
Little middle schools.
The Spring cleans, yeah, they are usually at the, the middle schools, and I just saw this one. I just can't remember what school is that.
Meridian and Victory, yeah, I'm sure, Meridian Middle School, I think.
Meridian Middle. But they're, they're kicking off the most dangerous days of summer, the most dangerous 100 days of summer, and so if you have an opportunity, we can get some information out to you if you want to go and check it out. I'd invite you. There's a lot of energy at those events, and it's a positive way to kick off summer. So, counsel, if there's no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve the spending authority budget amendment, not to exceed amount of $2,500.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second, to approve item 9A. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes, thank you. Item 9B is under our Fire Department, and I'll turn this over to Chief Neumeyer.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'll try and keep this brief. I have two updates to provide, so you can still set a record according to time clock. But we have some high school students, and I'd hate them not to get the full experience of a long, drawn-out council meeting, so I'll.
So, you have an hour of presentation?
Maybe slow down. Yeah, we have about an hour left. If you guys are good with that.
No, we make it three.
I can't even talk that long. The first update tonight is regarding the joint powers agreement, the Fire Cooperative Joint Powers Agreement. As you all know, we signed that, we kept moving, and then NAPA had a slowdown and a pause. I've been in constant communication with their fire chief, as well as the other chiefs that we signed on to this cooperative with. We have decided to come back to you with a MOU instead of a joint powers agreement. That was somewhat NAPA's issue, is some of the authoritative language, some of the other voting discussions within that joint powers agreement. Again, for me as the chief or your chief, this is for me about outcomes and, and providing you with the best service we can in ways that we can cooperate with other agencies in those areas. That's what's most important to me. I am perfectly happy with a, with an MOU, a memorandum of understanding. We have Emily Kane working on that right now. We anticipate it will take about two weeks. As far as process goes, we are going to bring that to you last after some of the agencies have signed on. When I bring that to you, what I'll be asking for is that we rescind the joint powers agreement and then sign the memorandum of understanding. Still cooperating in the areas that we identified previously, but in a way that is much less threatening, a lot less authoritative language in it, and allows us still to do what we need to do and desire to do. The good news is, I will update you on this, the Kuna Fire Department obviously has a new fire chief, you all know him. That's Perry Palmer, who used to be our deputy chief. And then the Eagle Fire Department has a new chief that came from Anaheim Fire in California. Both of those chiefs have been attending our meetings, and both are wanting to sign on to this MOU and areas of cooperation. So, Kuna and Eagle are now on board. They weren't before when I presented the joint powers agreement to you. NAPA, the, the fire chief there has talked to his city council, talked to his mayor. They're very supportive of an MOU, because it has that less authoritative language and allows us just to cooperate and work together. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions now. I just want to provide you an update of where we're at, and you'll probably see me again, hopefully, in two weeks when we have that MOU drafted up.
Thank you, chief. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
A couple of questions. Can you list the, with the MOU, who will all be signatories on it?
So, it'll be NAPA, Caldwell, us, Star, Kuna, Eagle, and Middleton. So, seven departments.
Okay. And is the, the document that we've got in our packet, the draft of the MOU?
That was the start of modifying and tweaking some of that, that language. That is what Emily's working on, so it gave you an idea of some, what we're deleting, but she is working on the draft, and I'll ship that to you prior to my presentation when I come back.
Madam Mayor, is that, that's not the extent of all the changes, though, I take it?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right.
No, that was my start.
Yeah, okay.
Incorporating some of those changes.
The final question is, from the, from a JPA that was adopted to the MOU, what are the, the core differences in control and authority that existed in the JPA that maybe made NAPA nervous?
Good question.
Won't exist in the MOU.
So, within the JPA, we still had language that said if we, together collectively as chiefs, come up with a program or a piece of equipment that we're going to share in, it had language in there that said the chiefs will approve the budget. That became very confusing, even though there's a section right below that that said that budget still needs to be presented to each individual board for consideration and approval. That caused some confusion, just having that, that type of language in there. The other thing, quite honestly, that NAPA was concerned about is the words authority and executive. It also established its own board, which I certainly don't need to sit on another board. And so, getting rid of all of that specific language and getting to the root of what are we trying to accomplish, what's our outcome, I think will make everybody a lot more comfortable, NAPA included.
Madam Mayor, so the draft that's in our packet still has that administrative board structure to it?
Yep. That's going away.
That's still going to, okay.
Yep.
All right, so there's lots of changes more.
Lots of changes coming. Yep.
Ms. Mylum.
So, do we not have an MOU with any of these cities already?
We had an interesting question way back in the day. I think it was 1999 is what I found. We actually had an MOU with the NAPA Fire District and the City of Meridian. And it was to do a lot of the same stuff we're talking about today, train together, work on our structure together as far as responses, so a lot of the, it's like bell bottoms, they come back, right? It was a lot of the same stuff back then that, over time, for some reason, went away. We now have a core group of chiefs that kind of believe in that concept again and, and working together. And so, we have had some of those MOUs in the past, certainly. We have an MOU at the district right now between the city and the district, so that we have some of those things in place.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions? Okay, well, we look forward to you coming back and, and bringing an update.
Absolutely.
And the MOU.
And I'll come back right now, a little quick, because I have another one.
And he's back.
I'm back. That was quick, wasn't it? That'd be quick work. Counsel, the, the second item is.
Item 9C.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. That's your job.
Back like a bad dream.
Is a clarification item. On the consent agenda, about a month ago, a little over a month ago, you had an item for the Fire Department to purchase software that we had budgeted for. Unfortunately, after you got done approving that, we realized that all the routing process that occurs in the city with the computer program that we put into getting you your agenda did not get to all the appropriate people. And so, Dave TD and IT had some questions, as well as finance. That contract that was approved under the consent agenda was never signed. The mayor did not sign that. We did not move forward until Dave TD and Todd and Keith Watson purchasing got all their answered, questions answered. That has since happened, so we are bringing back, again, essentially for approval, this software program. This is GIS-centric, performance-based software, so that we can plot all of our calls. This is very important, the Fire Department, to be able to tell our story on our responses and our performance. As you all remember, you adopted travel time standards, response time standards. This program allows us to collect that data, put it in one place, and then geolocate it to be able to display it and tell that story a little bit better. Again, it was budgeted for, you approved it in this current year's budget. This contract will go 12 months, so it will go through May of next year. At that time, we are working, this is one of the areas that we are working with the other departments on, in sharing this product to make it more of a regional approach, but Meridian still gets its needs met at a slightly decreased cost. We have other agencies that have committed funding in next year's budget to do that when we come back for contract a year from now. So, that is an area that we are looking forward to. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
More of a procedural question. I'm not sure who to address it to, so I'll just ask the question, and the appropriate party can respond. I'm not looking to take anyone to task or whatnot, but can someone explain how a software item got added to our agenda for us to approve on consent that hadn't been fully vetted? Just curious how that occurs.
Yeah, I can answer that one. Councilman Cavanagh, the software had been vetted. It was the contract that, when it got put into this system that we have in the City of Meridian that allows everybody to have input before it gets to you, evidently there was an update to that. And so, when that got put into the system, it did not route to IT and it did not route to finance. And we had assumed it did, because that's the normal process that we use here in the city. As far as the software being vetted, the software itself was actually recommended by IT to the Fire Department. They went out and they found it for us. And so, it did go through that. And so it did go through that vetting process. It went through the budgeting, vetting process back as we adopted last year's, or this year's budget. But as far as the process of the check and everybody's looked at it before it gets to council, what I got told was there was a glitch in the software itself, that it didn't get routed to the appropriate folks. And since then, they have fixed that, that glitch.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Clerk.
I think I can answer that a little bit further to Councilman Kavner's question. So within the, the software that Chief Neumeyer is referring to is the Novus software system that we use to create the agendas. Within that, there is an inside routing tab that we use to route through the, through the departments to check, to make sure that everything's been, been clicked on or approved, as it were. That's a, that's a training issue, that, that routing tab has been changed many, many times in the Novus system to actually get all the departments that need to be included in that software to be able to check off. At the time that this went through, I'm not sure that, that all of the appropriate departments were included or had access to the inside routing tab to approve or to not approve. And so it's been an ongoing training issue with the Novus software system, which is why council doesn't yet have that software in front of you to actually use as has been, it was budgeted and approved last year, right before I became the city clerk. So we've been working with Novus on all sorts of updates and changes to that software system, so that routing tab has been updated several times, and it becomes a training issue. So it would have been something, I'm sure, along those lines that got missed, as that has been updated several, several times.
So it was, it was caught and then brought back to the chief saying you need to go and take it through the appropriate steps, which he has done.
And that's why we held off on any signing of the contract, to make sure everything got looked at.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Chief, is this software, it's a different tool than the Firewise software?
Yes.
That was originally intended?
FireView.
FireView, excuse me.
Yep, FireView was the original request. That is another piece, but it doesn't have all of the tools that this piece does. So IT knew we were looking, and Matt Tenold, who's no longer with us, found this piece of software. It's being used by other agencies here in the state, does the same stuff, plus more, at the same cost.
So, Madam Mayor, one of, and this maybe is for discussion when it comes back, but one of the differences is in the, the annual licensing fees. If I recall, the, the FireView had a certain cost upfront in last year's budget, and then it was $16,000, I believe was the anticipated annual licensing fee.
Yep.
And this one, and so IT, at that annual cost, wouldn't develop in-house something that would be equivalent to $16,000, but this one is $50-some-odd-thousand a year in annual fee?
Yep, $58.
$58, which is vastly different sum than the $16, and, and some of the discussion, and again, maybe this is for the next meeting, was at that higher price, could our IT department develop something in-house in lieu of spending $58,000 a year?
That'll be something revisited at the end of the contract, the 12 months.
And, and Madam Mayor, and I don't know if this is the time for that discussion or the next meeting, to determine whether or not signing on this contract and committing to a $50-some-odd-thousand annual recurring fee makes sense, as opposed to revisiting IT's ability to provide something. Or at least have them speak to it and say, even at that higher cost, we still shouldn't develop it in-house for some reason. $16,000 is one thing, and I don't know where that conversation, how far that's gone, but...
Yeah, Dave and I talked about that at length. He is in agreement to do it for a year. The goal is to get the other agencies to partner in this, to keep our costs at $16, and I've got commitment from those other agencies. That'll be revisited when we come up for the contract in 12 months. I can tell you, at $58,000, IT cannot build the depth of this program, but can they build something else? And that'll be the conversation that we have in 12 months. Dave was good doing the 12 months.
Okay. And, and Madam Mayor, that's kind of where the question comes from. I, I assume that if the City of Meridian has a license that costs $56,000 for our department to use it, for other departments to share in the cost and piggyback on its benefit, the license fee is going to go up.
No, it'll stay the same. The, the way, the way this software works is they do it as a system license, and so that same $58,000, whether it's 10 departments, 15 departments, or five, will stay the $58,000, and you cost-share on that cost.
Well, is there not a department that you can cost-share that with now?
There is not. City of Boise is using the software, the Boise Fire Department. However, they got that for the first three years under a grant for the wild and urban interface. And so at that, at this moment, that is not available to us because that was specific for a, a grant that they received. They got to finish out that grant before they can look at collaborating with anybody else.
So you're not asking for action tonight. You're updating?
You've already approved the expenditure, so...
Yes, the upfront expenditure, but not the ongoing.
Right.
And would that not be considered a waste of money if, if you don't continue because you can't get others to collaborate with that cost share?
I think that the discussion, as I've talked with Dave and Todd, after a year, is do we fund this ourselves? Was the program that meritorious that we funded ourselves? Or do we have partners to share in the cost of that? I've got three departments that are already committed to sharing the cost of that, of that software in FY '18. So we can wait, or we can start. That's kind of where we're at. Right now, we have no way to collect this data and to report on it. This is the best tool out there to do that. So if we wait another year, we're going to be a year without this tool of any kind.
Will this be something that's considered within the MOU?
Yes, it is in the MOU. It's one of those areas that we've identified for collaborative efforts, is in shared enterprise software where it's applicable. And so this is an area in the MOU.
What, what I think the hesitation is, is you don't want to move forward until you know that has a cost share to the ongoing.
Yeah, and again, we're focused on this year's budget and the funding that was allocated for this year's budget. And that's where, that's where Dave Teedy landed and taught. In a year, we revisit it. If it's, if it is software that is that worthwhile, we have no partners, we bring you a budget amendment, and you can decide at that point if we're going to continue it.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
We're only four and a half months away from FY '18. We're not a year out. So I, I don't understand what the difference, if, so you've got commitments from at least three, possibly six, other departments. If you take $58,000 divided by seven, it's like $8,000 per department, unless you do it per capita, however it is that you decide to divide that out. But it's a lot less money, and to wait a couple more months, that's the way I see it, is just a few more months. Just because the money was allocated for fiscal year '17 doesn't mean we have to spend it. And, and to just set it out there for a year seems somewhat wasteful to me at this point. Now, if this were November, I might, I might feel differently, but we're just a few months away from the next fiscal year, right? That's my thoughts on it. Sorry.
And Madam Mayor, to Councilwoman Mylum's point, it might be an opportunity to, for the seven agencies to be presented that this MOU is coming up in a couple of weeks, of here's an MOU, how we're going to cost-share, and here's an example of a contract for your department to approve and your cost-share, and we're all going to benefit from it. Wouldn't that be the best first example? And the only reason, hesitancy, I think, is the risk that you, you go down the path and you implement it, and it doesn't work, and now we've got it, and now it's $58,000 a year. Well, we've already implemented it and got it to speed and got all the data, and, you know, the horse is out of the barn.
I'm certainly open to any suggestions.
Yeah, that's, that's the only hesitancy.
Any other questions?
I can certainly follow through with IT, follow back with IT, and bring a recommendation to council if that's what you'd like me to do.
I think that IT is, is, has a comfort level with the software. What, what they have no say in, but the council does, is that ongoing commitment that when the enhancement was approved during last year's budget, it was approved with a different ongoing cost to it. So this does change that enhancement, and the caution is making sure you have those, those cost agreements in place ahead of time, so it still fits within the anticipation of the ongoing cost to the base. And, and that's the hesitancy, Chief.
Sure. And I think we can, if we need to wait until October, we certainly can, to Councilwoman Mylum's point.
I, I don't know if waiting till October is, is really the discussion. It's the agreement of sharing in the cost of the ongoing commitment.
And that would be October, when other budgets start.
Well, if, if they sign it into the MOU, and you come and say, you know, these people are all on board, here's the signatures, they've, I, I don't see a reason not to move forward, but that's a comfort level that they will need to have with, with theirs.
Fair enough.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Sorry. Ms. Mylum.
Well, on top of that, I, I think that we're looking at more of the, if you're, if this is an annual contract that would, say, go into effect June 1st to June 1st, a lot of that time will be during FY '18. So even if we had a commitment, you know, if they, if they committed now and they needed to come up with, their portion would be such a small amount for FY '17 that they probably would be able to come up with it, if that's what the MOU is all about anyway, is doing these kind of things. And if they make a commitment for ongoing costs, I think that, that removes the burden that we're feeling of just kind of solely taking that responsibility into the future without any kind of, anything signed. FY '18 starts in a few months, so even if they waited until FY '18 and pay their portion of this year's contract, it still removes that burden, because a lot of this contract will be in FY '18.
Fair enough.
Clarifies a little bit.
Yep.
Mr. Kavner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, what, what I'm hearing from council up here is that we don't have a good, clear picture as to what the assumed ongoing cost to the City of Meridian will be. And it's, it's challenging for us to make a decision, thumbs up or thumbs down, until we have that clarity. If that clarity can come before the budget session, great. I think you've got a, a commitment from the council to, to hear that. If it comes through as part of the budget hearing process, I think that, that's fine, too. If it doesn't come until after the budget process is played out, I think you've still got a willingness from this council to, to hear that. It's just important that we have a clear picture as to what our ongoing liability will be.
Yep, fair enough. I will bring that back when the time is right.
Great. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And when, Madam Mayor, when we get to that point, my preference is to have a discussion in the, the budget setting process that, as to whether we're, if we don't know by then whether we're willing to invest the $58,000, assuming we get nobody on board, because I'd rather discover savings down the road than discover, okay, we're going to hope somebody gets on board, and then say nobody does, and then we do a budget amendment for more. I'd rather, if we're going to commit to it, we commit to it during the budget process, and then either we get savings, or hey, we decided this when we did the budget process instead of amending it later.
Agreed. Yep, all right.
So we'll hear this in a couple of weeks.
You'll hear the MOU in a couple of weeks, so long as we get that done legally. On the issue of the software, it may be a little bit longer than that.
Okay.
But we'll bring it back.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, item 10 is future meeting topics. Counsel, anything for future agenda items? Just a few upcoming events. Tomorrow, we have the groundbreaking at the Idaho College of Osteopathic Medicine, so hopefully you can join us at 11:00 AM at the lot just on the east side of Idaho State University. On May 18th, from 6:00 to 7:30, is law appreciation, law enforcement appreciation dinner at Harvest Church. They've done this in past years, and just a way to love on our law enforcement and show them how much they appreciate them. That's from 6:00 to 7:30. If, if you would like to attend, please let my office know, and we'll, we'll pass that along. Pause in the Park is on Saturday, May 20th, from 10:00 to 1:00, at Story Bark Park. The library is celebrating their 20th birthday party of their Cherry Lane branch on Saturday on, from 2:00 to 4:00. And join Councilmember Palmer on Monday, Meridian Mondays, at 6:00 in City Hall Plaza. There's nothing further? I would entertain a motion to close or to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.[1780.15]